Good morning, everybody. Welcome to this regularly scheduled council meeting of the City of Vader. It is Friday, May 22. It is 7:35 a.m. Roll call.
Donna Rogers?
Here.
Jason Daly?
Jason is not here and he has not contacted City Hall.
Joe Schimmel?
Here.
Mike Parsons?
Here.
Menthe Lovelady?
Here.
And Randy Hall?
Randy, is that who just called in? Nope, Randy is not here. He has talked to City Hall, though, and he's having technical difficulties.
City Hall's time.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United America, the Republic of
One nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. I'd like to remind everybody to continue to remind our citizens that if they need help with their sewer utility payments to contact City Hall, we do have some relief that we can provide to them. Good news, the comp plan was approved by Commerce. There were a couple of things they wanted us to change in the comp plan, but there were very minor things such as changing the classification of the highway, because the state listed it as a class three, and it was really a class two. So just some minor defining items, no real heavy content that they want changed. So that's good news. We're on track to have that available for your adoption at our next council meeting. The lawnmower. We did pick up the lawnmower on Tuesday. John has reported to us that it took him two hours less to mow McMurphy than what it would have normally took him on the old lawnmower. So that thing is already saving time. Preparing City Hall for eventual opening to the public. We do not yet have a date as to when we can open City Hall. However, we are taking measures to be prepared. So we have installed a clear panel with a small paper pass-through at the window, so when folks do come in, they can both, both sides of the counter can be protected. We also have masks available for all of our employees, so once again, both parties can be protected. So we're ready to go as soon as the governor says we can, we can open. Reminders that the public hearing on June 12 for the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan will be held, as well on June 12, the public hearing for the Vader Municipal Code. Both of those documents, as well as the comp plan, will be available for your adoption following the public hearings.
What time are those public hearings going to be?
Yep, they will be part of the council meeting. So we'll open the council meeting just as we have right now. And when we get down to city business, there'll be items one and two on the city business.
At 7:30 in the morning, we're going to have a public hearing. Okay.
Part of the regular council meeting, just like our public hearings usually happen. And the council will open each public hearing and close each public, public hearing. Council reports. Council members, do you have anything to report at this time?
I have something to report. I spoke to MRSC about the planning issue that I brought up at the last meeting. And the first thing out of the guy's mouth when I spoke to him was, what are you guys doing down there? Council meetings at 7:30 in the morning, really? So they're pretty shocked about what Vader's doing about these council meetings. They're, I don't think, I don't recall when this was agreed to, that there was any particular reason for doing it, but these meetings need to go back to the evenings where people can actually attend. I didn't hear any reason for this other than all I can assume it was somebody else's, on the council's personal need to have a 7:30 in the morning meeting times. But it's kind of embarrassing to even have MRSC absolutely shocked that we would do something like that.
Donna, you were at that meeting when we changed the meeting time.
Joe, I remember being there, and like I said, I don't think it's a good idea to have these 7:30 a.m. meetings. I think it was self-serving to someone on the council to change it to that.
Okay.
And in my opinion, it needs to go back to the regular time of 6:30 in the evening.
Okay. Any other council members? Comments at this time? All right, hearing none. Agenda approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council agenda meeting for May 22, 2020.
You have a motion from Mr. Parsons to approve the city council meeting for May 22, 2020? Do we have a, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Miss Lovelady. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. That's approval.
Make a motion to approve the
Motion to approve the council meeting minutes May 8, 2020.
You have a motion by Miss Lovelady to approve the council meeting minutes for May 8. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion to approve vouchers beginning of May 2020 of $17,250.41. The end of May 2020, $25,598.98 for a May 2020 total of $42,849.39.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Miss Lovelady. Any discussion on the vouchers? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. You have a special report from the Lewis County Sheriff's Department. Sergeant, are you there?
Yes, I am. I was told I was not on the agenda, though.
Surprise, you are on the agenda. Did you have something to report?
I don't. Other, I could pull up last month's activity, but I don't have it in front of me. I called yesterday and was told I was not going to be providing a report, so I apologize if you had me on here.
Oh, okay. Must have been a communication. Well, while you're here, do maybe the council members have any, they have some questions for you, perhaps? All right, I don't hear any questions, so thank you, Sergeant, for being here. Randy Hall just called in. Randy, are you there?
Yeah, I called the normal contact number and it said the meeting never started, so I called your number and I'm getting the telephone back.
All right, well, you are on with the city council right now, so welcome.
Oh, okay. What happened? You changed the number or what?
Nope. Nope, it's, it's just you, but I have you on the speakerphone right now, and so you are in the meeting, so welcome.
Okay, welcome.
We are at city, city business, item number one. Council to discuss the Parkport RCO grant proposal. Presentation by our Parkport Chair. Don't be shy.
Sorry about that. Was trying to find the unmute button.
You are live. Go ahead.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Just wanted to go ahead and update you on where we're at, what we've been working on in regards to our RCO application. Our numbers and everything are actually due June 1st, so we've been really busy. Anyway, so this is, this is our vision for Warden Park that we're applying for our grant for. And let's see here. So under existing facilities, currently, everyone pretty much knows that what we already have over there for us, as far as play goes. We have our basketball court, which is fairly new, and it's in great condition. We do have our swing set, which is, you know, kids absolutely love it. We do have a lot of teens that are down there that really, really utilize those, and a lot of other mid-range ages five to 13 families. Then we have, of course, the tetherball pole, which every time we put a new ball up, it disappears. So, so this is our current facilities, our vision. So the vision for Warden Park. Where our, our goal is to create a destination park where, park where residences can come, play, exercise, socialize, create something that's a lot more exciting and developmentally stimulating for our youth, and just really give them a place that they can, that they can and want to spend a significant amount of time playing. After talking with a few families that would come through at the park and everything, they're just like, yeah, we'd like to come here. We'd love to be here longer, but after about a half hour, really, the kids are bored. You know, we play basketball, we'll do some scootering, we'll do soccer, just kick the ball around and everything, nothing hardcore. And just, you know, they really would like to have a reason to stay longer, so. So, yeah, we're hoping to, after taking that and incorporating in our survey and feedback from our survey in our open house, we're, we're really excited about some of the elements that we are going to be tying in down over there. So the first thing that we're going to, one of the first things that we're looking at is, and that we hear almost everybody saying, we don't know that the park is there. So really, we want to get some kind of nice signage down there. It may not specifically be this sign, but it's kind of along the ideas of what it is that we're looking for, and we'd have it on the corner of A Street and Sixth Street. It'd be facing down towards A Street. That way, when people are driving through, they can see that there's a sign there. It's not just a big white house. That's what they refer to the jail from, from a distance. It's not just a big white house that's down there. It's, hey, look, there is a sign, there, there is a park to go with the sign that's off the highway there. One of the parts that we are also looking at doing is completing, completing the A Street parking for at Warden Park. Providing safer parking that allows us to create more of an ADA-friendly access. By, we would be adding in approximately 12 new parking spaces, integrating it in with the current, current pavilion pathway, and also integrating a new, a curb that would, a drain curb that would go from the length all the way down into our current southern bioswell to help prevent any further standing water drain. It would give us better directed drainage down there. Concrete work. So what we're really looking at, something that people are always talking about, and that came up quite a bit, too, is a place to, a place to walk. We really want to have a really nice walking path, and so you can see here that what we're, we're looking at installing in approximately 768 square, or it's not square feet, sorry, 768 feet of about a four-foot wide walking path. We would actually have a total of three access points, two from the front parking and one from coming up through the pavilion. This, this walking path will end up giving us the ability, us, anyone who comes and visits our park, the ability to, you know, have a nice place to walk around while their kid, and still have full visibility of their children who are playing. We're also looking at installing, hopefully installing three picnic, concrete pads that we would put, some kind of a picnic shelter on. So one would, the large one would be centrally, centrally located, and it's approximately a 20 by 20 pad. And the two smaller ones would be about a seven, a seven-foot by seven-foot picnic shelter. For the central pavilion, we, that's approximately 20 by 20. It may not be exactly this design, but it would be there in the center. It gives families a nice shaded place to be able to sit down, have their parties, socialize while the kid, and still have good visibility of their kids while they're running around playing at the playground. For, under the picnic shelter, the large picnic shelter, we're looking at approximately four to six tables, depending on the size, width, and length, that are mounted down into the, into the concrete. And they would be approximately eight feet long. For the two smaller pads, we're also looking at a shaded table, so no, it won't necessarily protect us from the rain, but when we get that wonderful sun shining down, and we don't want to be sitting directly in it, it gives us a nice little area to sit there. Still have, maybe not as good a visibility on the playground, but still close enough to the playground where they can have, where we can have, well, where we can see them. Also, another thing that where, that's really cool about these particular picnic tables or these shaded tables is that some of them, we may end up integrating ones that have the three benches like what you see here, and this provides another form of ADA accessibility. So anyone in a wheelchair who comes and visits, there's a good place for them to still have access to the tables without having a bench seat in their way. The playground structures. Currently, we've been working, getting some designs put together. We are looking at three primary playground structures. One, the swings. We want to keep the swings. Everyone loves it. So we will have a six, a total of six-seat swings, and feels like a bad tongue twister. And there will still be the toddler, toddler seat. There will be four traditional belt seats, and again, another form of another ADA swing, which also can be used as a toddler swing. And we have, we're going to be integrating towers and slides. And we're also going to be integrating a play structure that looks like a train. I'll talk about that more in just a minute. So the tower structure. This is a rough comp, this is of some of the pieces that we've been given as examples that we can put together, and a lot of it still being modified. But for our tower structure, it is designed primarily to fall within the categories of ages five to 12. There'll be several 10-foot slides, bridges, climbing structures, bouncing structures, poles, ladders, and I think we even have on the top, the top right photo, you'll see two kids on this blue bouncing back and forth thing. It's a standing seesaw. So one of the things we are hoping to have in, integrate in there is a little bit more of the separate free play on there. The train theme structure. So one of the things that I felt was important when we were working on there was to kind of tie in part of Vader's story into our playground, and we have, we have the railroad tracks not too far away from us, and whenever people talk about the, talk about Vader, we talk about our history, we always talk about the, the influence that the railway has had on, on our, our city. And so, and then with keeping with some of the historical feel and everything, we just wanted to have something that kind of represented that train element in there as well, just a little bit more fun, and it ties in with the old. I don't want to say, the style itself doesn't tie in with the old theme for what, that historical theme that's on A Street, how, the southern part of A Street. However, it does, it plays with the jail and the trains. So anyway, this is the ages two to five play structure. There will be slides, there'll be ramps, there'll be fireman poles, there'll be at least the five foot, maybe even a little bit higher, five-foot high monkey bars for the younger kids to be able to play on, as well as being able to play up on the larger structures. For the swings, so this is, again, you know, keeping our six swing structure. This does not have our toddler seat on there, but there would be the four belt seats. There would be one of those green-colored ADA slash toddler swings, and then there would also be a regular traditional toddler seat there as well. For play surfacing, we are looking at running with the certified cedar playground chips. And what we'll need to do, according to state guidelines and everything with our playground, is we do need to excavate our area about 12 inches deep, and then there'll be layers of drain rock, fabric, and then our chip. For our park, we are also looking at integrating, having more of our trashcan receptacles. For this, we're thinking, like, we would like to add in at least, I believe it's six. We'd have some down by the, by the parking spots, of course, at least one in each picnic shelter area, maybe even two, depending on how frequent, frequently used they become. Fencing. So we are providing safety border fencing. It's not necessarily to keep anybody out, but it is to help prevent people from falling down into the alleys that we have, or to the ditches and everything that we have over there on that property. It also helps prevent, well, it'll reduce the amount of basketballs rolling away and everything, again, into the ditch alley and our neighbors across the alleyways, yards. Oh, and something else that's also really cool is we are looking at going with the, this black chain link fencing, which comes with a 20-year warranty. We've heard really, I've heard really great things about this fencing. So, so, street view. So this is kind of a fun mock-up that we put together of the elements that we just showed you, and kind of what it would look like integrated in there. We don't have the sign on there. We don't have the fences, fencing on there. That would have taken quite a bit longer for me to get in there, but um, kind of just a rough idea of what those pieces could look like from the street view. And list of estimates that we have received so far from various companies that we've reached out to.
Do you have a list of the estimates, Kelly?
Those, yes, I do have a working list of those estimates, and some of them we're still waiting to come in on, and I'm hoping that we get something by the end of this week from a couple of them. The big one is the excavating and the concrete.
Yeah. So, oh, go ahead. Did you do this yourself?
Um, I have done, which part of it? Most of it, yes. I'd say about eight, 90% of it, the images and stuff I've had help with collecting information, definitely have had a lot of help with. But I have been running the meetings, getting together with the, when I say running the meetings, I mean, getting together with all the different contractors. I've been making phone calls up to Centralia and Chehalis to ask them questions, what their experiences are, and if they had recommendations and referrals based off of their experiences. The playground company that I've been working with, the Play Creations, the guy is really, really great, and he's actually one of the ones that's helping design Penny Playground up in Chehalis, the new Penny Playground up in Chehalis. So, yeah, I definitely have been doing a lot of this legwork.
Well, it's very impressive.
Thank you, Donna. I really, I really, really appreciate that.
Really nice. Tremendous amount of work, and it's, I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It means a lot to hear that, so. So, um, yeah, I mean, I can go through the project summary of the funds, how RCO works. It's kind of, the basics are right there. But I can answer any questions unless you want me to kind of read through that, the final slideshow, slide for you guys.
We should probably talk to the final slide. There are some folks that called in that can't actually see the slide.
See it? Okay, okay. So, so what it is, it's the project fund summary. And how RCO works is that RCO can provide project funds of up to $500,000. Normally, cities are required to provide a 50% match of funds, and Vader has recently qualified for the low-income reduction to the 30% match, which we were really excited about. And then this year, unfortunately, because of COVID, but fortunate to us, the RCO actually did a reduced match to 25%. So pretty much, we're going to, if, if we're able to actually get this grant, we will be able to get a lot more for, for our money. Anyway, our total process, total project cost estimate right now, we're projecting, is going to be, based off the numbers we've had come in so far, is going to be about $352,000. RCO grant, they would be covering the 75% of that, so that would be the $264,000. And our Vader match at 25% is at $88,000. So where we're getting that money, or where we're hoping to have that money approved for is that Vader can utilize our $80,000 in REIT funds, which council has actually reserved for parks over the many years. We're always told, once we've gotten things done, you know, this is where we pull, this is where we get our project money from. you know, this is where we pull, this is where we get our project money from. We also can utilize $8,000 of the STP funds to help to take care of the A Street paving portion of our project. And really every dollar into this grant is multiplied by about four. So, you know, $8,000 into the grant is about $32,000 in, in work completed. So, and in case you didn't know, REIT stands for real estate excess tax, excise tax, and STP is the Surface Transportation Program.
That sounds great.
Were there any?
You did a great job on this.
Thank you. Well, and just so you know, something that we are trying to figure out how to integrate with the playground company on that tower structure, we are hoping to add a little bit more of a nature type element into it. So depending on where all the costs go, where the costs, how the costs and fees and everything estimates break down, the smaller section of the, the playground where you have the little slides, we're looking at trying to maybe make that more of like a rock facing wall that kids can climb up into. Maybe have some wood plank elements in there for the siding. Color schemes, obviously, we're not looking at these specific colors. We're going to try to find something that's a little bit more complimentary and not to, to the area that we're placing everything. But, um, but yeah, it's, it's really, oh, and instead of, uh, instead of maybe this bridge that's on here, the bouncy rubber bridge, we're looking at trying to maybe in, include this really cool tunnel climbing element that connects the two, the two platforms together, the two mini tower and large tower. So. Yeah.
Well, thank you for that presentation. I, I can attest to the fact that she has put in a ton of work, many, many, many hours into this project. So I want to thank her, thank her for that. So, yeah, I think believe the timeline for this. There's an initial application that's going to be, the initial application, the acceptance into the program already happened. But this presentation, an initial plan is due at the beginning of June. And there will be a couple of different review periods that RCO goes through. And there will be time for changes to be made. You know, council can have input on to, you know, color schemes or some of the more finer points, you know, what type of structures, the final view of the structures. And, but as long as the overall vision of the park remains the same, you know, RCO is okay with minor, minor changes. Any input from council at this time? Do we like, do we like, do we like where this is going? Yep.
I think it's perfect. It's great for the area. It's going to draw a lot of families in. Kelly, you did a really, really good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Samantha.
Yeah, that's really kind of the, go ahead, Randy. Oh, thank you. Great. Thank you. Yeah, she did a great job. Yeah, you know, and the whole, you know, we're always saying, you know, what, what's here for, for, for the citizens, for the residents, you know, what do we have for them, you know, what do we have for the kids, you know, well, here it is, you know, this is, I, I can just imagine, you know, people saying, hey, let's, let's go to the Vader Park for a birthday party and then they can hold it at the central shelter while, you know, have cake and everything while the kids are playing at the, at the surrounding, in the surrounding play area. This really is a destination play area where people will, will, will come just to access some.
And something that's really exciting too about a playground about this size is that really look at our location and the distance we'd have to travel to something similar. I mean, Toledo has a nice small park. They have two parks. But we definitely would have more, more structure and play elements than, than what their Campbellson Park has. Their, their Wallace's Pond South County Park is a little bit bigger. But, and then Winolokwa Park in Winlock, yes, they have, they have more of that almost McMurphy sized park playground structures and everything, but a lot of it has, a lot of it is, well, it's, it's a lot more spread out and not necessarily that that's bad, but it's still, it's just a different type of park and playground area. And so this is something that we really wanted to focus on, just trying to figure out, how can we make ourselves a little bit more unique for our residents? And so anyway, this is, this is what we've been playing around with so far. And I'm glad to hear a positive response from everybody. It really, really means a lot.
May, may I comment?
Judy, yes, please call me.
Yes. Judy Costello. Kelly, I just want to say that in the last two months, my eyes have been opened to the fact that in just two households, there are 10 small children under the age of, say, 12. You know, and so when you look around, it's easy to have 20 children within walking distance of that park. So it's fabulous that we're concentrating for all of these little people to be able to get to there within what, you know, like three blocks. The parents can feel safe. So it's good. Thank you. I cannot see it because I'm on my phone, but I'm sure it's a wonderful job. I appreciate you.
Thank you very much, Judy. And if you like, when you get a chance to, I can, I can email you the PDF of the slideshow that we just put together.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And if there's no more input at this time, we'll move on with the next item of city business. All right. Thank you, Kelly. And moving on to item number two on the city agenda. Council to discuss updates to the City of Vader employee policies. At this time, I don't have another, an updated document to provide to you other than the one that you had two weeks ago. Did we have any new input on that, that employee policy document?
I don't, I don't have any input on it as yet, and I have to be very honest, I have not really looked at it that closely. So to compare it with some other policies.
Okay.
Next two weeks.
That's fine. Yeah. And I'm hopeful, I'll have the final, the final draft for you guys. And then I'll get it to you before the next council meeting, so you can have time to look at it. Right? Any other discussion on this topic? Okay. Item number three, council to discuss the planning committee and park board term limit discrepancy. So in your council packet was the agenda bill. It's for discussion purposes only. So in a nutshell, this, this is what happened. So the founding council, the founding ordinances for both the park board and the planning committee, they haven't been being followed correctly. The correct way to handle appointments and term, the term limits is exactly the, the way we handle council members and the mayor, where if, if someone is removed or quits before the end of their three-year term, the next person comes in and only fills in the remainder of that three-year term. They don't start a new three-year term. And that's the way we've been doing it. Talking to the, to the former staff, it was a combination of an oversight. So many people were coming and going into the different boards and planning committees that they lost track. And so, um, you know, it just, it just didn't, wasn't followed. So talking to our attorney, there's no risk that this puts the city in any kind of jeopardy or anything. It doesn't invalidate anything either of the two boards have done. So we're not in any type of trouble that way. But we do need to fix it and follow our own ordinance. So two changes need to be, two changes need to be made. First, what we can do, and this is, this is our attorney's recommendation, the, our founding ordinances for both those boards lay out a way for those boards to get started. So initially, we would reappoint everybody and the terms would be staggered, those very first terms. So some people would have a one-year term, some would have a two-year term, and some would have a three-year term. And then following, at the end of those terms, the folks that got appointed or reappointed would have the full three-year term. And that staggering of terms and expiration dates would be maintained by having a common date that those members always expire. So for instance, with the council members, we all expire at the end of the year, December, at the end of December 31st. So it's easy to keep track of who is where and we'll know every year that we need to review the expiration dates on our committees. And so, yes.
Really quick, you had mentioned that there would be one, two, and three-year appointments. I'm trying to understand where that directive comes from because it's not stated in the ordinance for a three-year, unless it's a reappointment.
I am, I'm pretty sure that the ordinance specifies three-year, three-year term. Are you talking about the, the initial appointments would only be two years and then following that would be three years?
Right. Yeah. So one or a two-year initial, you said you're going to appoint for one, two, or three.
Right.
But initial appointments are only to be one or two years.
All right. I'll have to look at that, but I believe this time we're, since three years is allowed, we'll some people will have, will, will be able to have a three-year term initially. So continuing, we'll also properly assign everybody seat numbers. So similar to council seats, we have one, two, three, four, five. The planning committee in the, in the park board will also have proper seating. So that's the plan. Hopefully that, that summarizes it well as far as what this document before you is, is suggesting. If the council is, is okay with that, then at the next council meeting, we will have a resolution that sets forth the appointments and the new term limits. And then going forward from there, we will always use a resolution to appoint new members. And it will always clearly list the expiration, the term limit and expiration date. And so we won't have to dig through old minutes to try to figure out who started when. And we'll have one document that always specifies it. Questions or comments on this?
Well, I'm, I have a question about it. This was all in our municipal code and has been for years. Section 20.16.200. And we, the council could have tweaked this and made it, I, I just question how much this cost us with the attorney to do this. Because the council could have done this easily. It's already in our municipal code.
Right. Well, I did consult our attorney, obviously, on this. I was worried that there could be some legal issues regarding the fact that we were operating with what seemed to be expired members. And I thought that contacting the attorney was the right thing to do.
Okay.
Well, may, may I ask?
We have a comment from the public, Judy Costello. Judy, go ahead.
Yes, my question is, at the next council meeting, after you have all read and thought about this and reset the table, we'll call it, will you be replacing anyone? And if so, how does one apply? Because there are about three community members that want to make application.
That's great. Yeah. So if, if council is, is okay with this plan, what we'll do is we'll have to contact the members, the current members and see if they're interested in staying on. And we also, I imagine there's depth, there's at least, there's open seats already on the, on the park board. And so, and anybody that's not going to be reappointed on the planning committee will have seats there too. So you're right. I think it's a good idea. We should advertise right away that there are available options within the city to volunteer.
Thank you.
So where's the council think about this? Are they okay with this course of action? All right. Thank you, Randy.
As the document goes, the document is okay with me. I do have some things I'm going to raise at the end of the council meeting though about this.
Okay. All right. Great. So hopefully we'll have this of a resolution for you at the next council meeting. And it, that resolution will be similar to all the other resolutions that we'll use into the future as far as appointing our members. And from that one example, our city clerk will be able to do all the resolutions going forward from there. All right. Moving on. Item number four, council to discuss the final draft of the six-year transportation improvement plan. Once again, I just have this on the agenda for any comment that you folks might have. This should be available for your adoption at our next council meeting. And, and then it won't be on the agenda anymore. Any comment on this? All right. Moving on. Item number five, council to discuss the final draft of the Vader comprehensive plan. Same thing as the, the previous one. This document should be available for your adoption at the next council meeting following the public hearing. Is there any, is there any comment on this? All right. Last item of city business, council to discuss the final draft of the new Vader municipal code. This document is a summary of all of our ordinances put together in one easy to read document. Once we adopt this, it will be available at your next council meeting. We'll be able to have this online and it is great. You'll be able to search for any, any ordinance that, that the city has and the keepers on everything. So it'll make our lives a lot easier. Any discussion on this? All right. Public comments. Any public comment?
Yes, please.
Judy Costello.
Yes, Judy Costello, 709 A Street, Vader. First, I would like to say that I disapprove 100% of a 7:30 in the morning meeting. Especially with the turnout, you have minimal, you have trouble getting a quorum this morning. I don't know if that's been in the past. But I don't, I don't feel warm and fuzzy about this at all. So I would, I would love it if we would reconsider going back to 6:30 meetings like we've always done. So people can actually come and, and, you know, after the virus is over, obviously, but go back to our other situation. I do not feel that a public hearing online is going to work for a lot of people. I just do not think that's a good idea at all. Let's see, meetings and, okay. Oh, and on your meetings and you approve the agenda approval. Both the agenda approval and the minutes approval say meeting. It doesn't say city council agenda or city council minutes. Just heads up, I saw that when I was going through it. Let's see what else. Had one other thing on my mind and I totally lost it. So I, I look forward to seeing what's going to go on with the resolution on the park board and the So I, I look forward to seeing what's going to go on with the resolution on the park board and the planning committee. So that's my comments for today.
Thank you, Judy. I can. We are hopeful that at the end of May, the governor will allow governments to hold their public meetings again. That is, that is the hope. And so our June 12th public hearing will be able to be held with proper social distancing, taking into account, I'm sure, in, in a, in a public in-person setting. So that, that is, that is the hope. Just a FYI on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Well, may, may I ask one more thing?
Sure.
Do we, do we know who else is online? Do you have a list of the people that are attending these 7:30 meetings?
Yes, I, I, there are 10 different people online right now.
Is that including council people or is that public?
That does include, that includes everybody, the council and the public. It does not include our clerk who is online, who is here in person off to my right.
Okay. Okay.
Any other public comment? All right, elected official comments. Elected officials, do you have anything to say?
I do. No one wants to go. I have a question about, as I recall, when we did this Jill contract thing. It was supposed to be initially for 90 days. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So are we past that 90 days now without an approval to extend that?
We are past the 90 days. If you remember in the contract that it allowed the mayor to extend it for 30-day periods up to six, 630-day periods is what it is, up to 630-day periods. And so we have been extending that 30 days at a time.
Okay, because I, I noticed, gee, my mind's blank at the moment, but on the, oh, gosh, what am I trying to say here? Let me see. Well, on our municipal codes things, it lists Jill as a past city clerk. So what, what is the status here? What is going on with this?
No, if you remember from the, the contract that, that we approved, she's a individual contractor that we have a contract with.
Yes, I know, but at, at other times it also says she's still a full city clerk treasurer and you know, she's still doing when she feels like it or whatever the program is there because nobody seems to really know, or I certainly don't. In and out.
I'm not sure what you're, what you're referring to. I can tell you that the capacity that she has been operating on is, is purely advisory at this point.
Okay, so she's not actually training Diane then?
Well, she is right. It's, the advising is part of the, the training, right? So Diane has questions. For instance, there was the, the annual report that was due. Jill's provide guidance to Diane on, on how to do the annual report. That way, next year Diane can do it on her, on her own.
Okay. Well, that's just what I'm trying to get clear. So. All right. I guess that question's cleared up and the next one I have is the purpose of the planning committee that we don't take advantage of. And it's cost us a lot of money with a city planner. So if the planning committee isn't able to do the job or doesn't want to do the job, I don't see the planning committee being necessary at all. And there's also an RCW that addresses that, 35A.63.010. And down to section eight, it says, planning agency means any person body or organization designated by the legislative body to perform a planning function. So I want to know if the planning, if we're going to have a planning committee, I'd like to see them doing actual planning. Instead of just called in and used whenever anybody needs to have something approved technically through a planning committee. But we have a planner that we're paying an astronomical amount of money to, and we also don't get any public reports from him like we should be getting. This is, all this planning is supposed to be done in public meetings. If that is going to be the case where he's going to be giving reports like he should be giving, that should be part of and not an excess amount of billing for a report. Because I want to see that start happening. But that is supposed to be happening. You know, we don't know what building permits are going on, what's being built, what's coming. And I think that needs to stop.
Well, I can look into getting reports from Gary on the work that he's been performing for us. I can say that a vast majority of the funds that the city has paid to Gary Cooper came from grant funds. So the comp plan, the troi management plan, the, all those various stuff, things that he's been working on, we're all, we're all grant funded. So.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the normal, regular, everyday stuff that the planning committee could be doing that he is charging us for, for, I mean, he's part of inspections, he's part of permitting, he's, that's some finding committee he'd be doing.
Okay.
Instead of him. Otherwise, there is no point to having a planning committee if he's going to be doing it all. And when we were in the middle of this comprehensive plan and three years behind, and actually seeing meetings canceled because the planning committee didn't have anything to do, I find that a little bit shocking because they should have been doing that comp plan. And there's plenty of help out there for them to do that through MRSC and the state.
Well, first I need to make sure that everyone understands that the, the planning committee is required by law. I, I did look at 35A.63 and it does refer to a planning director who's kind of a, a staffer, an expert to help guide what's called a planning agency or a planning commission it talks about. So they are two distinctly different groups. One would be the planner in our case, and the other would be our public volunteers that are on the commission or committee in our case. And so it, the RCW goes through, it says in many places that that the code city shall direct the planning agency to do certain things. And it makes it clear that the planning agency is a committee and it's, it's not a staff member. Who obviously Gary Cooper is a paid member of the city.
Well, I would more.
Are a paid member. And so, so the planning is necessary. But you're right, it's possible that the planning committee could be doing more with regards to reviewing certain permits and inspections. And I'll look at that. And if that's possible, we'll try to get them involved in that more.
Well, the thing is, no, we don't, some kind of a planning, planning something is required, but a planning committee is not required. Like I said, means any person. So the planner could be that person. And I'm just saying that it's got to be one or the other. We have a planning committee and if they're going to be one, then they need to be a planning committee and do the work. And it is a lot of work. So they need to be. And I also want to bring up the nepotism that we have here in this community. And I think that needs to stop also. That we need to have people on there that aren't related.
Oh, I see. Okay. Any other comments from the elected officials? Okay.
Of course, I disagree with your opinion. We go by the law. It's not the easy says about relations on committee. So you expressed your wish and I expressed my disagreement with you. And there's not much more to say about.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
I didn't hear all of what he said. I don't know about anybody else, but he was kind of breaking up.
Mr. Hall expressed his disagreement with some of the comments that you made and that his opinion is that fairly opposite of what, of what you said. All right. If there are no other elected official comments, we'll adjourn this meeting at 8:35 AM. Thank you, everybody, and have a good morning.